Welcome, now that we are all here.
Feeling very social tonight, I can feel that energy.
That Mr. Legrand, he's always loquacious, huh?
Welcome to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. It is Monday, October 7th. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ross, will you please take the role?
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Slade.
Here.
Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Legrand.
Present.
Reverend Matthias.
Present.
Pastor Moody.
Present.
President Faul.
Present.
All present.
Do have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Celebrations.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would like to ask Mel Atkins, huh? Mel Atkins to come forward, please.
Good evening, President Faul, Superintendent Neal, members of the board. I'm glad to be here tonight to introduce Edma Lopez. And she's going to talk about an exciting opportunity we have with Fifth Third Bank in two of our after-school programs. Very exciting program about banking. And so, teaching our kids about math after-school connected to what happens in the day. We're really excited for it. But without further ado, let me introduce Edma Lopez, who's Director of Extended Learning.
Good evening, President, Superintendent Neal, and esteemed board members. We're here to celebrate our partnership with Fifth Third Bank, which is our Young Bankers Club. Like Mr. Atkins said, is related to math. And the lessons are aligned with our five national math standards. And here to speak with us about it tonight is our Senior Vice President from Fifth Third, Patrick Lannigan.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
And good evening.
Superintendent Neal, President Faul, and esteemed board members, thanks for having us here. Yeah, the celebration is about the Young Bankers Club, which will actually launch tomorrow night. And on the handout that I provided, I guess if you could flip to the backside, you can actually see what the 10-week curriculum will look like. And it's going to be done at Brookside and campus. Also with me is Tomas Guillen from the bank, who's going to be one of our mentors. So it's a 10-week program. There's four. There's a adult mentor for every four students, so there's a lot of great hands-on activities, and you can see the kinds of things that we'll be talking about. So that's going to launch, and we appreciate really everybody's partnership with us in bringing this together. It's the first Young Bankers Club that Fifth Third will be offering here in Western Michigan. And we are really excited about doing that at GRPS and bringing an innovative program to the school. There's some other facts on the sheet as well around youth financial education, which I'm perhaps a little bit embarrassed to say we've been doing really for a number of years at GRPS, but which we probably had not done at any... We did a poor job at communicating. So the... If you look at the information, we've been doing a thing called Teach a Child to Save, which we executed for 6th to 8th graders. It's a one-day deal where we come in and just teach basic elements of banking, and it's all age-appropriate. This past April, we did it within GRPS at eight schools. We had 43 presentations. We had 78 hours of time where our folks were there teaching, and we reached 946 kids in GRPS. And you can see JA as well. We've done JA in a number of schools for a few years. And this year, it was in three schools. And in general, in all these schools, all the classes are taught by Fifth Third employees. We try to do that. 268 kids reached there. So an ongoing partnership, which I'm really excited to expand with YBC, and would hope that we have opportunities to grow this even further in the future.
Nice. Looks great.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Actually, I have... Yeah, if you don't mind, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think it's a great idea. And I honestly think if we could figure out a way to make this kind of basic curriculum mandatory for every kid in the schools, we should. So, I mean, I'm glad you're doing it. I wonder about changing the name, so it doesn't sound like, gee, if you want to be a banker when you grow up, you should take this. Because, I mean, every citizen in America should understand that playing with credit cards is kind of like a weapon of mass destruction, and that saving is a good idea. And basic budgeting skills are probably more important than a lot of other things that we teach in our curriculum. So I really would love to see this expanded. But the other... The follow-up question is, could you perhaps make available to the board members the curriculum for this? Because I'd love to get an overview of exactly what it is and what you're talking about. Because I think if we're going to partner on this, we should be really paying attention to what the content is. And it looks good, but I'd like to know more.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
Interesting thing, there's a thing called the Bankers Club, which in Cincinnati would be maybe like the University Club here. And so, it connects to that facility, which if you were from Cincinnati, you could see it as being an important gathering place. And so, but I kind of share the sentiment of the name, but that's where it came from. We'll get to the curriculum and be happy to...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see you guys come in and like, you know, do an hour in every classroom in GRPS, whether or not somebody joined a club. I mean, that's... Because these are the kind of nuts-and-bolts life skills that I think are, you know, really, really important for long-term success for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Ms. Slade, where are we with the student rep?
Student rep? I'm going to look to my colleague, Dr. Baker over there. Student, young lady who kind of volunteered, is really young. And so, we thought we'd best go...
A young man, ready to join us, but he's doing... Spending Monday evenings doing a dual enrollment class at GRCC, and as soon as that's done, he's going to join us.
Fantastic.
From Union High School.
From Union High School.
Towards the end of November, yeah.
Great. It'll work out great.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ross, do you have public comments for agenda item?
We do not.
Thank you. Reports. Mr. Ross, do you have?
No secretaries report today, actually. I guess it's pretty quiet, so nothing to report in particular.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have two guests here this evening that I would like to ask to come forward, please, and that is Brandon Dillon and Winnie Brink. They are going to provide us with an update, a legislative update.
Thank you, sir.
Sir? Just like back in class, huh? Handing out. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us a few moments of your meeting this evening. And I want to thank Dr. Faul and Superintendent Neal, and also the members of the board for giving us a few moments. We're here tonight to present to you the House Democrat's School Reform Task Force Report and to discuss our action plan for improving Michigan's public schools, and especially our struggling public schools. From May through September, the task force met with educators, researchers, professors, university presidents, and superintendents across Michigan, gathering information about programs and ideas that would provide real solutions for Michigan's struggling public schools. We don't believe that Governor Rick Snyder's education achievement authority is the answer. This report creates a three-step action plan that will improve our schools. First, educational professionals will go into struggling public schools and work with educators, parents, students, and community members to do a thorough review resulting in an action plan designed for the specific issues and challenges of that specific school. The second step calls for the Michigan Department of Education to do a study to determine what it actually costs to educate our students. This study would give policymakers a better understanding of the investment needed to educate students, given all the services that schools provide. The third step outlines our plan to level the playing field among our traditional public schools, charter schools, and now, online schools. There are many more educational choices available to Michigan students, and if we are going to achieve effective school reform, then we need to level the playing field so that all of these schools are held accountable to the same standards. Too many of our schools are struggling, but they are not failing. The failure has been at the state level, with the continued disinvestment in our schools leading them to where we are now. This administration's approach to school reform was to meet in secret, behind closed doors, with no input from teachers, researchers, or parents. Task force members sought out... Our task force members sought out the experts, the researchers, and the school administrators, and listened to what they had to say, and came up with what we believe is a better school reform plan. We believe that our school reform plan, calling for reviews of struggling schools, a cost study, and accountability and transparency standards, is the best way to help our schools improve. We don't want to see any more school districts dissolved, which happened in Buena Vista and Inkster, or a community's only high school, middle school, or elementary school closed, which happened in Albion, when officials decided their only option was to close their high school and send students to school in a neighboring community. Our children deserve the best education possible, and I look forward to working with my Democratic and Republican colleagues to deliver an excellent education to every Michigan student. Now I'll let Representative Dillon, who was co-chair of the House Democrat's School Reform Task Force, tell you more about their findings.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, Superintendent Neal, Dr. Faul, and all the members of the board. I think Representative Brink gave you a good outline of the report that we issued about a month ago, but I just want to stress a couple of issues. And one of them is the approach that we took over the last few months in seeking out across the state. We were in Grand Rapids, met right here in this room, meeting with educational experts. We were in Marquette, Washington County, Oakland County, Lansing, met with a wide variety of people. All those proceedings are online on the Michigan House Democrats School Task Force website. It's about 15 hours of testimony and information that we were given by education experts across the state. And one of the things we really wanted to focus on was, what are the solutions that people who actually are working in our schools and people who've studied this issue for a long time are advocating? And one thing became clear right from the very beginning, was the idea of what we call a Community Education Action Plan, but it really is a concept that's been used in Pittsburgh and other states around education audits. Superintendent Neal, you would know that what's... The challenges at a school that's having struggles in Grand Rapids are certainly not necessarily the same issues that a school in Detroit is having, or a school in Alpena, or a school in one of our other rural communities. We believe that the things that a school district or a school billing... School building is struggling with are oftentimes unique to that school building. It could be academics. It could be financial struggles. It could be a failure of leadership potentially in that building or in that district. But the one-size-fits-all approach that we've seen, not necessarily in this administration, but in the last 15 to 20 years, we think is the wrong approach. We think these... The concepts of local solutions for local schools is the right approach. And this is actually consistent with reforms and policy proposals that came out of the Race to the Top exercise that Michigan went through back in 2009 and 2010. The Michigan Reform School... The School Reform Office in the Michigan Department of Education was originally envisioned as a partner for local school districts. What we've done is taken that office, and through legislation that we'll be introducing, we want to make them a partner with local school districts. So for instance, if a... If a building in Grand Rapids Public Schools is identified as struggling by whatever metric we use, whether that's in the bottom 5% of test scores, or not meeting AYP for a number of years, we would... The Office of School Reform would initiate a comprehensive review with people in that district. We'd have parents, and this would all be set forth in legislation. We'd have teachers. We'd have administrators, superintendent, community leaders, pastors, local businesses, people that live in that community that can wrap their arms around that building and then come up, not just talk about solutions, but come up with a real plan to turn that school around in identified period of time. We think that what's... What the minds we have in districts like Grand Rapids and across the state, it's a much better long-term solution to have a problem solved at the local level with local solutions than it is in a one-size-fits-all, kind of Lansing Knows Best approach. We also believe that school funding is still a very important issue. It's no coincidence, in my opinion, and members of this task force, that the number of deficit districts has doubled in the last two and a half years. The one consistent variable in those two and a half years is consistent, persistent, and deep budget cuts to our local school districts. Districts like Grand Rapids, and I want to commend this board and this superintendent, have done an incredibly admirable job of doing more with less. But we want to know what it actually does cost to give an adequate education to students in Michigan. Proposal A answered the question of equity. We have not had a real conversation or a study as a launching point for discussion about what is adequate. Certainly, people like myself and Representative Brink believe that we should be spending more on public schools, especially in districts with high poverty and high needs. But we believe that the only way to really determine what it costs and what we should be investing in our children's future is to have a real independent study done. There's never been one done in the state of Michigan. There's been studies that have precipitated by constitutional language in states like Pennsylvania, but in Michigan, we've never done that. We think that's an important measure to focus the policy discussion, not about how we can always look to cut money for public schools. But if we do, and when we set the budget level for schools every year, we should know what the difference is between what we're sending school districts and what it actually should cost to educate a child and prepare them for college. Number three, Representative Brink touched on it, but leveling the playing field. In many ways, the debate over charter schools and cyber schools will continue on probably much longer than we are in the legislature, and much longer than most of the board members here, except for maybe Board Member O'Connor, who's only in his 20s. But we don't think... We agree that education choice in education is good, but it's not an end unto itself. And if we're going to allow parents and give them the opportunity to send their children to schools of choice within districts, charter schools, and even now, online schools, we want to make sure at the very least that everybody's playing by the same set of rules, and that we're evaluating the effectiveness of these three different forms of education with the same measuring stick. So one, just as we have... Just as the governor and the legislature has talked about creating an education achievement authority, which we obviously don't agree with, but for the bottom 5% of schools, we think that any charter authorizer who has a charter school in the bottom 5% should not be allowed to authorize any more charter schools until that problem is fixed. We also believe that every parent, every taxpayer in the state has a right to know how much of their tax dollars is actually going into the classroom. So we want a breakdown from traditional public schools, charter schools, and online public schools about how much of the foundation allowance they get is actually going into classroom, and how much is going into other areas, including profits. And finally, we want to make sure that just as you are having a meeting here that is open to the public and open to people across this community, that all forms of school choices in the state, whether they're charter, online, or traditional, have open meetings that are foable and allow people to come to their meetings and ask questions and receive answers in many cases. We know the job you have is very difficult. We're not... One of the things I also want to stress is this is not a static document. We'll be introducing legislation the next week or so, based on the reports we have here, but we know this is not the perfect solution. We know that this is something we're going to continually have to go back to our local officials, our local education experts, our teachers, our parents, our administrators, and find out what's working, what's not working. But the bottom line is, we think that the best solutions to education are developed in rooms like this, in classrooms across the district and across the state, in kitchen tables across our community, not in these kind of ivory towers where it seems like the reforms flavors of the month keep coming from. So with that, we just wanted to give you an update about where we're at. We look forward to continuing to work with you, with our colleagues on both sides of the aisle. We don't believe that education policy... There is no partisan cornering of the market on what works in education policy. We want to use things that are data-driven. We want to use things that are researched. That should know no partisan label. That's the effort we tried to go through by listening to people who are experts in these fields, and that's what we want to continue to do. So with that, we'd just like to leave you with the report and allow you to ask us any questions if you'd like to.
Yeah. First of all, thanks for your work on this. I frankly think the idea of coming up with a benchmark for how much it costs to educate kids adequately is brilliant, and hard to see that anybody can frankly be against that. It does get a little old in our world. I mean, we're all... We're elected, you're elected. To have every politician I've ever met say, "Children are our future," and want to get pictures taken with children, but not actually take care of them when the cameras stop rolling. So I think that actually quantifying that is critical, and it's a brilliant idea. So thank you, and I hope that's got legs. I also think that... And I guess my... I have a related question, and that is, we all know that Snyder sort of pulled the bait and switch and decided to start funding universities using K-12 money. That leads me to this question, which is, have you thought about holding, using those same standards for percentage spent in the classrooms as an accountability metric for universities? I think that might be a very useful thing for taxpayers to know, frankly, because, again, I think many of us know that one of the tragedies of the last 20 years in secondary education has been administrative bloat and facilities bloat, and that that's led to real spirals in the costs of college education. And I think that this kind of metric can help us stop that happening in K-12. If taxpayers know how much money's being spent on administration, well, if that goes up over the 10-year period, there can be some public pushback. So I think that's great, but I'd love to see that applied to universities too, because I think there's a lot more bloat there in the administration level than there is in the K-12 level. Have you thought about that?
Well, first of all, just let me also go back to our part. One of the recommendations in our report is to pass a constitutional amendment that would stop the ability of taking school aid money out of the school aid funds. We believe strongly that school aid money should stay, not just K-12, but pre-K-12. But it should not extend beyond the high school level. I would caution a little bit against... I don't think there's any harm in doing a study like that, but I would... I think the metrics we use to determine money going into a classroom in K-12 would be a little different than higher ed. We have some incredibly strong research institutions in State of Michigan, University of Michigan, Wayne State, Michigan State, that I don't know if we can have the same measurement for those universities we do in a school that has a different mission like Saginaw Valley or Grand Valley. And I do think we ought to be... We ought to be very careful, too. 25 years ago, the percentage of state aid dollars that went to higher education was up to almost... Was 75 to 80%. Now we barely are able to call our 15 public universities, public universities anymore. They receive less than 20% of their operating expenses from the state. So how much?
14.
14%. While we want to make sure that we know, and I think it's good to have that steady and benchmark, I just... I think that the measurements we would use would be certainly much different for K-12 than higher ed.
I just have a quick question, though, particularly with that last piece about leveling the playing field, and particularly the things going on with the charters and whatnot. Any action steps that we can take to help move that along?
We'll be introducing legislation here, and we'll be asking people who believe that this is a good way to go to contact legislators from across Kent County and across the state. The Chair of the Education Committee, as we all know, is right here in Kent County, and I trust that she wants to make sure that all schools are succeeding. I take her at her word. And in fact, we've... We talked... I actually... We brought in people from the charter school community, and we talked about these recommendations, and they had absolutely no problems with making sure that their schools were held to a high standard. So we don't think there'll be a lot of pushback on these particular recommendations. In theory, it'll be the specifics about how we implement it and the legislation. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to work out through the process.
I would just add, speak with your colleagues in other school districts around here. There actually are four Kent County legislators on the Education Committee in the House. So in some ways, that's an opportunity for us to have a little bit more influence and reflect our region and our priorities, so.
Well, just a quick point about the true cost study. That's not a partisan, you know, question. I've been hearing people discussing the desire to do that from many different angles, MASB and others, for quite a while, so it shouldn't be seen as a partisan issue.
Well, and I would just add, you know, we... I fully suspect that a cost study is going to show that we are woefully underfunding education. Just because the study shows that we should be spending significantly more, the budget realities that we face would be very difficult to get there all at once. But we think it's important, when the debate is being had, to know how much money we have in the school aid fund and how much we should be spending. I think it really, hopefully, will put education even more in the forefront and put a little bit more substance to the words people might say sometime about education being a top priority, when it's kind of this amorphous, subjective idea about how much we should be spend. That can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people, but if we really have a number about the target, I think it focuses people's attention more on where we should be. If it comes... Maybe it'll come back and say that we're not... We're spending way too much. I highly... I think that's highly doubtful, and I'm sure most people at this table would disagree.
First of all, I want to thank you both for your leadership, and for the Democrats on this leadership, and I expect to see a lot of bipartisan participation in this, because as Dr. Baker mentioned, I've heard some of the same requests and queries coming from our Republican representatives, like the true cost of education. So I look forward to that. It makes so much sense on so many levels, all of your points. One of the things I would like to ask about is how we define what a struggling school is. When we have just a flat proficiency, it makes very little sense. We should have a growth model to determine whether a school is struggling or succeeding. I know that other states, when they applied for their waiver for NCLB, included a growth model. Michigan did not. I'm hoping that there's a real different approach to that, because there's always going to be a bottom percent, and it doesn't give credit to schools that are actually accomplishing quite a bit, so.
Sure. And I will just say that we've taken some testimony on that topic already in the Education Policy Committee, so it is an evolving issue, and I think that we'll probably end up seeing some legislation on that this year. So I am eager to have... To continue that conversation, but if you have feedback for us, please... Please stay in touch and let us know, and I can make sure you get some of the ideas in front of you that are being discussed as well.
Have any questions?
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate the update. That's very helpful.
We have no action items, so we are on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Ross, please take the vote.
Who made the motion?
Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor, of course. And who was the support?
Legrand. Of course.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
President Faul?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 9-0.
Can I change mine to present in honor of Justin Amash?
No. We're not allowed to.
Discussion items. None. I would like to mention that our work session for Monday, you can take a hold off of that because of our retreat next week, so no work session on Monday. Public comments. We have a couple cards here.
Yes, we do. We have Donald Zerio and Paul Helder.
Thank you. I'll introduce myself. My name's Don Zerio, and I am told that I go back to Phil Runkel back in the early 70s.
Sir, before you begin... Now, wait a minute. Go ahead.
I'm Zerio from Cascade Township.
Okay. Some of us go back to Phil Runkel.
You and I, ma'am.
You and I. Would you like a... Would you like a card when you're... You have one minute left, or are you good?
One minute.
Now, you have three minutes. You have three minutes to speak, and at a one-minute... Would you like a one-minute warning or not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because I'm not prepared, as I usually am.
Not.
Okay.
But I did send a letter to Ms. Neal, and I'm assuming you got it, because I got a very fine reply from Nancy. I can't remember. Mr. Dillon spoke about education. And I have been attending meetings, Board of Education meetings, Village meetings, and so forth, and I have never, yet, and this is why I'm here today, never hear... Have never heard publicly, not only in the newspaper, but at these meetings, anything to deal with role models, for instance. I wasn't prepared to give this to you folks tonight, but anyway, I have been pushing for original, positive role model letters that I have sent around. original, positive role model letters that I have sent around, role models for especially minority young men and women, and it says in there, and I was obviously setting up future speaking, as I am tonight. My young daughter came, the youngest daughter came, she just moved out to Oregon, and she says, "Dad, why do you, why are you always so angry? And why do you waste your time going here?" I said, "Well, in a word, it's because for thirty, forty, fifty years, I've been reading about these things, and I hear the same litany, a new bunch of faces, same old song." And I said, "Second of all, is because I'm informed," and then now I add, because my blood pressure went up, I said, "It's the Lord's fault. It's the Lord's fault. I read in the paper that two million Sudanis left," excuse me, Syrians leave their homes with all of their possessions on their back. And I said, "Only somebody that doesn't care, or doesn't know, or doesn't prefer to know, doesn't get angry." I'm reducing up my time. Thanks a million. I have another for you that brings me here, what's going to talk in the future. It says teen pregnancy costly for everyone. This is an editorial from the Grand Rapids Press, twelve seventeen oh seven. They were talking about increase in pregnancies, and yet, once again, not a single solitary politician, elected official, or any folks like you that talk about education and kids are our future, or legislators that are down in Lansing. No one speaks, except people like me, who are then labeled, labeled party, key partiers, racists, and so forth. And so, I would suggest to you that you give it to your attorney, and these sheets here are very misleading. The last time I was here, well, I should leave that for Mr. Johnson. He and I came this close, or we should say, we came this close, meaning the Board of Education. He doesn't know how close he came to the future. Now, I'll have to speak on that later, but did you bring me an extra?
Sir, your time, sir, your time is up. Thank you.
I am going to home, Dr. Foll, but I, I don't know your names, but this is serious business. I also, any rates of out-of-wedlock affects graduation. You can spend ten billion dollars, and it's not going to change the graduation rate and the violence that's creeping into Grand Rapids, which used to be a safe community. Thank you, and God bless you each and everyone, as Tiny Tim said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Helder?
Do you want the red card, Mr. Helder?
I don't think I'll need it today.
Right.
Leave that.
Missed you. It's been a while.
It has. I know. Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I will keep it short, or as short as I'm able to. I, I guess, let me just cut right to the chase. There are a host of, of issues that continue on in Grand Rapids Public Schools, you know, the, the same song, different singers thing that was mentioned a moment ago. I will say, though, I have heard some of the new singers start to, start to work on, let's say, harmonizing, and let's say, trying to, to change the song. I'm sure some of you probably get emails and phone calls, I know I get a bunch of them, but I should, from my members and other employees and parents and everyone else, complaining about one thing or another thing. What I can tell you is, you're not going to hear a bunch of complaining from me tonight, not because there aren't some problems, but because there seems to be now an interest in solving problems, and in doing so in a professional manner, and in doing so, you know, through some simple meetings and emails and, and trying to, to make your point in a logical fashion, and look at language and agreements. And I just wanted to let you guys know that some of the new employees that have been hired are really doing a fantastic job, and, you know, if, if that continues and we're able to solve things and work together and fix problems, I think that's going to go a long way in the long term toward solving morale issues and, and helping this district become a better place to work and learn. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Refreshing. Thank you.
Wow. Hey, it's refreshing for me, too.
Super. No comment.
Mr. Ross? I guess I almost want to comment about Mr. Helder's positive commentary, but I think I'll go play the lottery instead tonight. Yeah, I was with that. No, no comment, though. Thank you.
Thanks. Actually, we have an Academic Achievement Committee here tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock, so four of us will be here to discuss academics, and so, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Pastor Moody?
No comment.
Ms. Slade?
No comment.
Dr. Randles?
I'm saying no comment, though. Thank you.
Let the record show John O'Connor said no.
Mr. LaGranne?
Just briefly, I, I would be curious whether there's any historical precedent for both of the state reps for Grand Rapids actually coming in and briefing us themselves on legislative issues together. It's an interesting inversion. We usually spend a lot of our time trying to have breakfast that maybe legislators will show up to, so maybe they'll listen to us. So, it's not just great to hear what you guys are doing, but it's frankly a little strange to have you have the humility and grassroots sensibilities to come and tell us what you're doing and tell the public what you're doing in this forum. So, I appreciate it on that level, too, both Representatives Dillon and Brink's. Very, very impressive. Thank you.
Reverend Mathias?
I guess I would say that it, at least from the grassroots school level, we see a lot of people working hard, a lot of administrators, a lot of teachers, a lot of parents that are passionate about their child, certainly their safety, and particularly their education. They're very concerned about their child's education, because, like a parent, we want our children to succeed because we succeed. I certainly want my children to take care of me. And hearing from the parents, that's where they're putting their nest egg, in that sense. If they have a retirement plan, it is their children. And because of that, we, we have an obligation, as you do, to make sure that we do the best for them, because they're depending on the educational system to prepare their children for their future, and we know the benefit for us as parents. And so, it is exciting to continue to be part of this board and, and to see that coming to fruition in, in the lives of, of children, so. Thanks.
I just want, you know, we pass these resolutions all of the time on this board. There's usually a lot of them, and today, we passed the, the lights on after school, regarding after-school support, and we had celebration regarding our after-school program, and I know Dr. Baker was in Lansing last week testifying on behalf of our funding. And this relates, I mean, we want to continue to, our after-school programs are wonderful. We want to continue to improve, expand them, to thank our community partners and our leaders in it, and also to ensure that we have continued funding for them and equitable funding for the highest-needs kids, so. Good evening, everybody. Meeting adjourned.